When did you want to speak?
Green.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, where did I stand?
Didn't like.
Alright, so I am here to talk about the impending childcare crisis that is going to be happening in our state. The funding is going to run out as of July 11 will be our last payment and that has kept our programs open and operating and our tuition stabilized in this entire state, community and county. For example, my rates will be going up $50 a week as of September 1st, which will be $330 for an infant or $310 for a two-year-old and above, which this is to keep myself at $40,000 a year for income. If I don't do this, then I lose $10,000 and I cannot keep my house at that rate. And so we're here, I'm here, sorry, nobody else here with me, I'm here to ask that you contact Senator Mark Klein and Representative Mark Moore and let them know that the funding is imperative for your community to continue to operate and parents afford to pay for care and also career employers to have employees. I do have some handouts I'll give to all of you. We're also asking people across the state and municipalities in boards like yours to make a declaration supporting childcare and investment in childcare. I have an example of the Oclarone that they did that I will give to you that you can put on another agenda, obviously. But I just wanted to let you know, according to the survey that happened in December but was released in April, Green County alone is going to lose 54% of your programs. We already only have 28. That means there'll be 14 in the entire county of 26,000 residents. Thirty-five percent of our programs will raise weekly tuition if it ends, 44% are going to reduce the number of kids because we're going to lose teachers and 30% are going to reduce hours of care available. This is happening in a lot of communities, they're going down to four days a week because we can't find staff and we are fighting to keep a $13 an hour wage. So we're not fighting to keep $20, $30, $13 an hour, over half of us qualify for manager care and food stamps. That's all at risk now with the federal government. So I just wanted to make sure everybody here knows Thursday is actually Department of Children and Families Day where they will be discussing the budget. So there is still an opportunity to ask for 480 million state dollars for the next budget. I did make copies for folks to be able to back up on the email. Thank you. Oh, sorry, June 30th, there's going to be a meeting with the Green County Childcare Network and the Green County School District at the Coward House at 6:30 PM and I will email that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, do you want to speak during your presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. We have one person that also would like to speak and I'm sorry, I can't make out your name. Who was it? There's no address or nothing on. You made the hell, you're at the bottom.
Last name maybe starts with an M?
Okay, then moving on, I'd look for approval of consent agenda.
So.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote motion carries. Item five, new business. Item B, considerations discussion operators license. I think we can just approve them all as a block here.
These have been reviewed by staff and by Chief Sturgman.
Motion to approve operator licenses.
Okay, we have a motion second and a discussion. Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Item B, consideration discussions, special event, William Tell Art in the Park plus temporary liquor license, temporary operators license.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I can speak on that. We have a special event permit. This is a yearly event that happens in our park. There's minor changes this year, so that's why we put it on part of the regular agenda. That's the village board's policy if there is any change to these permits. Those minor changes include requiring festival organizers to empty village park trash cans at the end of the event and take the trash with them and then they just supplied a more detailed list of the bathroom availability throughout the event. Certainly nothing major in terms of changes and staff recommends. And I know we have some of the event organizers here too that can add any information or take any questions.
I move to read the special event, William Tell Art in the Park.
Second.
Okay, I think I want to clarify something because I read someplace that they were asking Scott to pick up the garbage before and after.
Typically, we pick it up, we do Friday and Monday, so I think we'll just make sure when we go throughout Friday, we just empty everything in the garbage just so that there's.
Okay.
And then we just had asked that they take the trash with them every day Saturday so that Sunday it's not overflowing with trash.
Great.
Thank you, Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Item C, consideration discussion, Newglers EMS presentation.
Give me one second, getting a pull-up here for you to speak. Okay. Okay, I'm just going to scroll through my screen. Actually, well, sorry. I can have it if you want me to click for you, I'm happy to click. Okay.
So we'll go through it side by side. There's not much to go through. We just wanted to, first of all, I guess I should say my name is Justin Malin, Chief of Department of Fire and Us. I've been in any of us for 38 years. I've been the chief until now for 17. Going through this, we go back to the ambulance and such that the service purchased back in 1975. In 2009, I had a discussion with our board of directors to change the name to Blue Area because we don't just serve the village of Newglers, we don't just serve the village and the town of Newglers. We have five other municipalities. We also serve portions of. So we added the name area into it and if you have that, that was one of the, one of the things that the village requested was the change in the name that had already been done and taken care of. Okay. Fifty years later, this is what the ambulance looks like. It's a little more roomier and such. So ambulance, I see up here, this ambulance was purchased by a portion of a grant, donations from the community members and a loan for the remainder of the portion of it that we took out, which is almost completely paid off at this point. Who we are, we are made up of myself, Holte, the only full-time person, my Assistant Chief, Josh Westcott is also, he's part-time. I have 15 volunteers. You can see some of them around the room tonight. We have three affiliates from the Newglers Fire Department that help us out also when we need it. We are one of two services in Green County that have two ambulances. Eight seventy-five are primarily ambulance to staff 24/7 with a full crew. Eight seventy-six comparable to the fire department where it's an all-call, anybody that's available comes down to get that ambulance out for us or to help get that ambulance out. So our training that we go through, you can just. We train, we train, we train and that's, you know, that's a good portion of, that's a good portion of this. Every month we're doing training. We have people that do training online and such every week. Go another one. Seat guard training in town for the fire department. These are some of our, our certification for our initial classes to get to where we want to be in these different levels. The emergency medical responder, the EMR, first responder stage where a good group of our fire department personnel are at. It didn't exist back in 1975. There was no such thing. Around 2000, the course was 56 to 60 hours roughly for to get into the class. Now it's up to 72 hours for the course. EMT basic is, it was 81 hours back in 1975. It's more than double that now in current time. Advanced EMT, which used to be IV tech, didn't exist back in, until around 1985. Right now that is 170 hours. That, so folks, that's above this. You go through this course first. The 180 hours you have to take first and then you have the additional 170 hours to get to this advanced EMT point. That is where our level of service is in this town right now, but there's a caveat to it. We have two, almost three paramedics now on the service. So when they run with us on the service, our ambulance flexes out to the paramedic level. So whenever they're on the schedule, we are at the paramedic level. And their hours to get paramedic back in 75 was 500, now it's 1,800. One of the things with all these hours that are under 2025, fall of 2026, they're increasing, they're almost doubling in time. So I'm just going to put this out there. One of my, one of my little things is with this, you see all the work we do, the hours we put in for the training, the initial certification. It's kind of hard to be called an ambulance driver, so we do a lot more of the driving ambulance. So if you go up to the next slide, this is our continuing education that all of us have to do in a three-year period of time. And the year 2000, this is what it was. 2025, this is what it has increased to and they're looking at increasing that as well. That is, that is a change that we don't know if this will be a lot more or just a little more. So that's, that's continuing the change and we do, what else? We do training month to month. Second Wednesday of the month, we train, we do all the aspects, this is all our spunking, our CKA, everything that we need to do is done by us down at the station. So, good. So with that being said, and our runs per month that I did this, you guys probably can't see it back there, but this is between 2022, January 1st of 2022 and June of 2025, these are the total number of calls in those three and a half years that we've had. So our busiest month that you can look at is May by 154, then it goes to March, then it goes to January. And we think that the January ones are just burning on the dread again and still nice. So March, we can't figure out. So go ahead. So our average run times, our average run times up or, and these are 2022 average time en route to get out the ambulance out the door was just over five minutes. In 2023, it was just under five minutes. In 2024, it was just barely below four minutes. And in 2025, right now, it's a just a couple seconds over four minutes. So that is, you know, we're doing excellent getting out the door with that ambulance. But our total calls for the years, eight seventy-five had 396 calls and then 33 backup calls. The eight seventy-six, so in 2023, it's, it's different than our report system, so it comes out different. This number, the 29, is how many calls we had on the backup, right? The other totals, and I can do that in my head, sorry, the other totals are what, eight seventy-five down. The same thing down here, these two, they, they just fell in there because we can put in where the incidents are and that's, that's one thing that we're starting to record now as well. And then this year so far, it shows eight seventy-five with 236 calls, eight seventy-six with 19. Those are not correct. I believe we're at, somebody can help me, 239? I think I need seventy-five and I think we're at 22 already, 22 or 24 with eight seventy-six. We're doing more than responding to calls. We're a key part of the community. We do blood drives. We do open houses. Well, these are some of the pictures going all the way back to 2007. This is how long we've been doing this for the community. We do CPR for the brewery. We do the community open houses. We have our law enforcement there with us, we have our fire department there with us, nut flights there with us. Our crew members are there with us, K-9 units. And then we have people in the community that come out and join us to celebrate during that week. But our open houses took place during EMS week in May. Red Cross Blood Drives, we started that back in 2020. We started with one or two blood drives a year. Now we're up to five to six a year. Halloween, do these guys help and work them to make them go? They also do one, ask them. So our total donations, they weren't able to give us a full report in 2020, but were able to tell us there were at least 59 pints. You go down the different years, so far right now, 62 pints for pints for 2025. If you look down here, that's a total of 739 plus point there are pints. One pint helps three people, so that totals out to about 2,217 people that have been helped by the blood drives that we have alone at our station. And there's one coming up, folks, June 28th. But breakfast time apart, we go there, we stand by at that, we do tours in the ambulance. You know, it's Imperial Township and Dane County. This is in York Township and Green. We organized the 9/11 parade that went very well in town here. We stand by at football games. Festivals, we're also at festivals, public information. So this is Home of Our Own. Home of Our Own sponsors us every year and we typically do it around September 11th. And we go in and we, we eat dinner, we eat ice cream and we talk to the residents of Home of Our Own. And we have them get to know us, we get to know them. We have, you know, several people there with disabilities. So it's a benefit to them, it's a benefit to us for both of us knowing each other. So Brenda's, we were invited to give that information to the public. We recognize those in the community also that go above and beyond. Brandon Zimmerman, she's been a teacher in this community for 70 years. Seventy years.
I still do it.
Yep. So I had put her in for a Crystal Apple Award a few years back and got a bunch of people from the community to also put in letters and support a friend and she was able to win the Crystal Apple for that year. Mr. Zimmerman, now a deputy, has got to save the life of the man next to him. A lot of you probably know him. But he was able to get on scene right before us and play a tourniquet and life-saving measures to the town. So we, we sought him out and gave him an award for his life-saving actions. Donations and grants, we, we write, I write for grants. Even, you know, even a couple thousand dollar grants, they help for our equipments, our equipment. More grants, donations. Halloween, we have flashlights for the kids, candy for the kids, the members come down, they hand the stuff out. Everybody goes home happy unless it's 30 degrees outside. Again, we help the community and we help where we can. This, probably most of you, kind of all of you saw this. This is in Utica County in Browning, Tennessee. They had flooded these other ambulances, their first response vehicle, their fire truck. I found out about that and I simply wanted to fill the ambulance up with supplies to drive down there. We donated that ambulance to them. We had that ambulance on sale forever. It was on sale for a year, if not more, that we were trying to get rid of it. You cannot sell an ambulance for much money. Trust me, not much at all, probably about five grand if even. So we came up with filling, filling the ambulance. We not only, in these pictures you'll see, and it doesn't depict everything that people in this community donated to us. We have, our station was full. Our station was full. There's, there's, you know, a 30-foot trailer we filled up to take down with us. That Green County Nationals, Fall Nationals, they helped us and offered to drive down there to drop off the trailer full of golden supplies, stock food, cat food, diapers, you, you name it, everything you can think of was in there to take down there. So we took the 30-foot trailer that was full. We took the ambulance that was full. We took, put parts of some of the donations in the back of a pickup truck that went down there with us. So this community, this community is now well-known also in Tennessee. Their news channels broadcast this and they were just the response that we got when we got down there was just phenomenal. It'll be something etched in for all of us that went with heads for the rest of our lives. It was great. This is a group of us that have been down there and a group of the EMTs that are in that ambulance now calling it their own. So we thank you for your support for that. We're not only members of the community, we're members of EMS and we're a second family. So with that, now you know some about us. What questions can I take?
Well, we are so lucky to have you EMS people hanging down, turning up in seven municipalities. So do you ever serve beyond those seven municipalities? And I know the three obvious ones, Delph, Newglers and Monticello. Where are the other four?
Well, no, we actually cover all of Newglers, all of Towne of Newglers, part of Imperial Township in Dane, part of Perry Township in Dane. Part of Towne York in Green, please tell me who's counting, part of Mount Pleasant in Green and part of Exeter in Green. As far as any other districts, we do get mutually calls, mutually calls. We've been into Blanchardville to help them out a couple of times this year already. We've been in Delph and helped them out a couple of times already this year. So, yeah, we do not cover Monticello.
Yeah, well, I forgot the municipalities. Thank you.
Well, again, thanks for coming in today. I think there's several people on the board and me included who are newer, so I think getting a little insight is really helpful. Can you describe like how the, the management of the nonprofit runs? Like you've got a board, you've got, so how does that, what's that layout like?
So we have a, we have a board. Our board consists of members of the department, EMTs there on the department and people from the community that are sign up to be on the board. They have to be voted in. That man, they have to do almost kind of like an interview in front of the membership and then they get voted in. Voted in or not voted in, I should say, so.
And how many people are on the board?
We, right now, we have four. There's between three and five.
And then so that you have, I'm assuming like president, vice president. Treasurer, all of those, those come from the same.
Yep, and Bill Francis is here. He's one of my board members for Mountain Community as well.
I did provide, I told Chrissy this too, she had sent us her 2025 budget and I did put that in the packet as well.
So the budget that you guys are working on was made in January of this year, which means that it did not have the actuals from 2025 incorporated into it. So we did a mid-year budget and corrected a couple of things and I'll give you, they'll see this. This was not in the January part of the budget. There's a line item on there that says FAP, it's FAP Funding Assistance Program. It's in the budget, it shows what the, what we received the year prior, which was $7,035. So that's what was projected on the budget. So if you look at, that's the new one. If, if you have the new budget, I didn't have time to get that all together for everybody tonight, I apologize. But if you look at a letter we received in March, we actually received $26,837 towards the funding assistance program this year. The state of Wisconsin decided to change it, so they upped it and that's where they increased it too. So we have changed that in the budget. We have also changed the revenue that we get from our, since we got the total revenue for 2025. We also did a projection for that for 20, for the entire year, sorry, 2024. For all 2024, it's in there and we also did a projection of what it would look like for 2025 with where we're at right now and from last year and that's adjusted on there too. So the shortfall that you saw in the first budget of $24,000 something is not correct. The, the new budget shows, now Walter hasn't, Kathy hasn't. I can't. Nine thousand something. So that's, that's more than where we're going to be at the end of the year. It's not going to be the shortfall. So, and I apologize with the budget, I, the person that was projecting the budget texted me at 136 today and said that he had somebody that passed away, his family needed to leave. So I'm, I will do my best. No questions?
So who entered all the, entered the computer?
And that's all entered in by a program called QuickBooks that our accountant has.
That's a LifeQuest services?
LifeQuest, no, LifeQuest services are where we get our ambulance revenue from. That's where we have our report system that we do after each call, we have to do a very lengthy report. And then that goes to LifeQuest and that's our run revenue, our call revenue that we get.
So do you put together the numbers and then take them to the board or how does that?
The accountant and I put together the numbers and then we take it to the board.
And does the, you have a treasurer on the board, does that person also like help prepare these? Who is your treasurer?
Mark Sholliak.
You? I have a question on wage expenses. They go in 2022 from $164,000 to $247,000. Is, has the staff increased or who, how does, what accounts for that increase?
We have, we had hired an additional part-time person for the service. He actually resigned in January, got back down to a volunteer so he can go back to school. He's our third paramedic coming in and then we did some adjustments to the stipends for the volunteers.
How many people does this include, do these payments include? Was that total? Is that your whole staff?
It's inclusive of the staff, yeah.
And that's 15 or?
50 volunteers, there's three affiliates, there's myself and a part-time person.
So we're talking, you know, 57, 85,000.
So how are your volunteers pay, is it similar to like the fire department where they make so much per call or how does that work?
I honestly don't know. With us, they get a stipend per hour to be on call. And then depending on their level of service, EMR, EMT, advanced EMT or paramedic, they get paid per call as well. And then depending on their level of service, E M R, E M T, vastic into your paramedic, they get paid per call as well. Um, uh, different amount depending on where you want.
Not that it matters, but do the calls matter? Like some are worth more than others or not?
No.
I was all curious, it doesn't really matter.
And then in terms of benefits, is it like a full benefit package for the one full-time and then? There's an, what else is included in benefits for that line?
The um part-time, so Josh is the assistant chief's position, has requirement benefits, um insurance benefits if he wants them.
Does the EMS pay for insurance whether he takes them or not or only if he takes them?
Only if he would take them.
And is this typically approved by your board at the beginning of January or how does that only?
We, we wanted to just go ahead, ask the, from the copy of the budget, so we put something together with the information at the end, back in January. So typically we don't, and you know, you guys tend our, our budget meetings for the new contracts. That's typically so typically around August, September, maybe, late.
But you have a yearly budget every year though. So those contract meetings every three years, but you have a budget meeting, yeah.
We have, we internally, yeah.
Right, right, right. So this is approved before going into the next year?
Yes.
Okay, and then we had uh, we were talking about some contract amendments. Do you anything concerning those or that we talked about earlier?
Um, with what?
The EMS contract with the village. Did you look at those amendments that we, we were talking about?
Well, yeah, you guys brought them to me in the meeting on May nineteen, but I don't have those in front of me, so.
Okay, so you don't have any, you haven't, there's nothing you saw or anything about that that you liked or didn't like or?
Well, we're, we're working with a EMS consultant right now with some of the stuff, but like we discussed, the name has already been changed. That's not an issue. The insurance um that you guys requested us to carry, we already talked about that. We carry over three times of what you're requesting us to carry. Um, the audit, that's been a pretty hot discussion. We, we don't mind doing an audit, but again, where we're going to come up with six to ten thousand dollars to do that audit for you guys at your request. Is where the issue lies. So if there's help that can be given through the village, the town, whoever, to have that audit done. That would be great. So this is a request from you guys.
I think that's something that would be built into the three-year contract price, um just speaking from other entities that we contract with that have that requirement. Anytime there's public tax dollars used, uh, an audit is pretty standard and five-year audit is pretty standard. So I, I would be surprised if there was a municipality that was against having that audit built in and that cost over, you know, a three-year contract would be somewhat minor.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then I think the other one was the board member and or liaison. I know that was a.
That was also, that we're also looking at with the EMS consultant right now.
Do you have a timeline of when you think you'd have any answer to these?
I don't, probably within the next month.
Okay, thank you.
Um, can you explain in January uh through December of two thousand twenty-three, you had a. Uh, income of eighty-eight thousand dollars and then in the two thousand twenty-five budget, you have a negative twenty-four nine. What happened?
It's, that's what we just discussed. It was that bad. Yeah. And in that amount, that's from grants that we received.
Okay.
So that's what brings that up to that high.
Do we have those grants in that item I have out or did, it just says grants, it doesn't really say which ones, I mean, broken down?
Well, it doesn't have anything for, yeah.
Yeah, no specifics.
And maybe this is another update that occurred, but for twenty-four and twenty-five, we have zero dollars in the grants. So you, is it your? Gotcha. So you didn't get any last year either?
Um, the grant that we got was from the, we did get a grant from the jury.
Okay.
So, and I honestly can't remember. I think it was kind of lost in dollars.
Okay. And do you run your payroll through your accountant too or who takes care?
Yeah.
And then I know we had a conversation about the second ambulance and you'd said now that it was a battery issue and that is fixed, so.
We had all the batteries replaced in.
Do you have to take your ambulance to somewhere special?
Hunert's in Monroe does um the work on the backup ambulance. Right now, the primary ambulance is still under warranty, so it was out of console for.
How much does the ambulance cost?
The one that we purchased, the ambulance alone was two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And it was considered a demo ambulance.
I want to compare us to part of Monroe City, probably like forty-five thousand.
We quit, I think it was what, like sixty-five or?
So if it's not a demo version, they're fifty grand more expensive or?
Yeah, probably sixty more.
And what is the lifespan on the ambulance?
Well, the one that we, the one that we sold um, put up in place of, um, actually, I think it was in place of the red one. Was just over twenty years old.
And in that?
A lot of ambulance services replace their ambulances within five to ten years.
So who are the driver?
So some of us less.
Yeah, almost everyone.
Depending on the needs of the department and the schedule of the time.
You couldn't pay me enough.
So there's some of us who have educational career that I guess. You might like it, like the sirens.
I don't know, I've seen some of the drivers that don't get out of the way very well, especially on the belt line in Mass and it gets pretty hairy.
So typically when it's, when there's any sort of accident aside from an automotive accident. You guys, like let's say P D and fire and you all killed at the same time, are you guys in charge for those?
Oh God, no.
Who's in charge for that?
Yeah, well, the first on scene is typically the one that will take charge, but they have the opportunity to pass that. So when we get on scene of a crash, we get on scene of a crash first. And some of us that have been around for a year or two, we get in a first-end report and I immediately say. We're, we're passing command to the first-end fire vehicle.
Okay.
And that's standard nationally.
So car crashes and any other call are all kind of the same?
No, not necessarily. Medical calls, if we have a medical call or a call for assistance, we're going to take the lead and I. Be in the higher level of care on the scene.
So I was going to ask, contractually, what are the hoops we still have to, I mean, to get through?
Um, so Chrissy had given us the contract for the next three years. Uh, we worked with our attorney and we shared some contract amendments we'd like to see. And we kind of left it at the last meeting that we had that you were going to speak to your board about those and get back to us. Um, I would say typically the, we sign those three-year contracts in early fall. Um, so we like, I mean, that would probably be about the latest on the village side only because of budgeting. Um, I want to make sure it's a number in there. But that's where we're at with the three-year contract. And then Chrissy, just ballpark, um, just thinking about, you know, future planning and staff. How much ballpark does it cost to have a full-time person? And I know when we say full-time for you, that means a lot of hours. Um.
Well, again, it's going to depend. Are you going to salary them?
Right, I probably, I guess what I'm saying is.
I'm sorry, do you actually buy the hour? So if you do it by the hour, you know, it's going to depend. It's going to be twenty, twenty-two bucks an hour or whatever.
Right.
And then a portion, the longer you work there.
Right.
The more of your insurance gets paid. So it's not a, you walk in and your insurance is a hundred percent.
Right.
You have to pay for a chunk of that and as the years go by then.
Sure.
And closes that. So if it's a salaried position, obviously, you know, a salaried position nowadays for EMS.
Yeah.
Is going to probably be forty to forty-five thousand dollars a year.
And that is like a flat, there's no comp time overtime, I mean, it's a normal salary.
I wouldn't speak to having a village board trustee be a liaison on the EMS board. Because I know I'm a liaison on the library board and sitting in the meeting to really. Learn what the needs are of the, of the whatever your liaison for. And it can either be a voting member or not. Uh, but it really helps communication.
And also if you need a three hundred thousand dollar ambulance, you know, it's good to know.
You'll probably five hundred thousand by the time you need it.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, that's one thing we've done over the years is we've gotten used to ambulances, newer reused ambulances, we kind of work their way up. So um.
Yeah, I don't mean it, meaning you just spend less money. I would just say like if somebody is on the board and we can share that information. Um, if there's something you need, we can bring it and say, hey, this is something that they need. It's kind of like, I'm on the fire dispatch board. Um, and we knew about the fire truck way ahead of time, so we could try to budget for it. Um, if you need something, we don't want you to think that um, there, we'll, we'll find a way.
Yeah, I think just having that open line of communication has worked really well with some of our other contracted vendors or contracted services. Um, and I think it, it keeps the board, because the board, you know, we have elections every single year. So we have new people sitting at this table every year and I think it keeps a consistent form of communication about what you guys do, who you are, what your needs are. Um, and what the future looks like for you. Um, and it helps us plan because as everybody I'm sure in this room knows. Tax levies are impossible almost to future plan with, so we really rely on good capital project planning. Um, and looking for other creative funding sources. So having that information as soon as possible for us, it helps us help you the most.
And I know one of the things that um Warren put in the email for um, a me other than the stuff that I went through. Was any big purchases, what have you, that we have in the future. One of the things that we're looking at, and this would be done by. The same way we got the ambulance by um donations and um grants, is putting a second floor on the station. Our station, we, we roam out of that station. We have three bedrooms in our station. And if we have crossover staff at night, we end up having somebody sleeping in a recliner on the couch. Because we don't have enough sleeping facilities for that. So that's one thing that we're looking for moving into the future. Way back when we started our capital fundraising. Um, our first step was to get two D Fibrillators, new D Fibs for the ambulances. Those were a cost of fifty-eight thousand dollars a piece. So with that, we, I wrote a grant to Firehouse Subs. We were able to get um one quickly paid for. The other one was paid for by donations from the community. So that's primarily how we do what we do. And get the things we get. They're by grants, they're by generous donations from people in the community, which is just amazing in a small community like this. So over time, we can, we can get those things. Not quite sure how long it'll take to get a building addition, but still. Going to work on that next.
And you guys are, sorry, you're a five oh one?
So one of the departments started in nineteen seventy-five, they put the service on a five oh one C four.
Okay.
So then in two thousand and four, that was actually changed by the board before I came here, because I started in later in two thousand and four. Um, it was changed to a five oh one C three, which is what it is currently.
Anyone else have a question? Um, I have a question for future planning. I'm, I'm so keeping on this. Um, what are some concerns that you have? With EMS, whether it's staffing, I know we talked about funding, right, funding is always, but what are some concerns that you have down the road? In terms of keeping EMS running at the level that you want it to run at?
Well, I think staffing is always an issue, always an issue. I mean, we're a combined service, volunteer, paid service. It's always going to be an issue, so we have to get out, try to figure out how to get more volunteers. But if you, you saw on the slide, the hours that have to be put in to get to that point. We have to have people that are dedicated and want to do this.
Sure.
So, you know, looking at different, different options, different things that we can do in the future, we get a bigger building. Maybe we can have more people come down there and train them and put them through and that'll bring more people to the community as well. I don't know, it's finances, the funding aspect is huge and the staffing, yes, it's, it can be an issue. Just depends on what the volunteers have to give.
So right now you would say that you have enough volunteers that you're out of space?
We never have enough volunteers. We don't put a, we don't have a limit on how many we can have. So, but yeah, we, seriously, you can never have enough volunteers.
Like how many are scheduled on a typical day?
Two.
So are the volunteers compensated for the hours they train?
Eight hours an hour.
For the training work?
Three dollars an hour.
Three?
Three.
Plus gas or? Whoa.
FYI, you guys should be proud of the people you have sent.
Minimum wage is seven fifty and blowing fifty dollars, correct?
If, if I may, one of the, you asked earlier about like, why did your staffing expenses go up so much? And I think that year is when we went from one dollar an hour to two. And so that might be a factor in the, in the. And the staffing.
So one, one hour will buy you one gallon of gas.
So of that three hundred and twenty-four thousand of wages, benefits and taxes, forty, let's say fifty. Fifty thousand for the salary, maybe half of that for the part-time. So the rest of that is made up of benefits and then the volunteers pay.
Well, you truly are volunteers. How many uh paramedics do you have?
Two, one gentleman going through training. So we'll have three at the end of the year.
How about advanced E M T?
You know, I had a feeling you were going to have.
You don't have that.
No, I think we, nine, nine about nine or eleven.
Wow, that's a good.
Nine or eleven.
Well, obviously with the staffing and the uh finance portions, but I mean, you're pleased with how things are running. And you're looking to, are you looking to make any major changes with the coming three years of contracts or is it, you're hoping to run it how you're running it?
We're hoping to run it the same way we're running it. We, we probably will look at a part-time person, but I don't think that'll affect. I think that'll affect uh around.
Can I just speak to the staffing issue? Um, I've been on for fifteen years or something, a long time. And it truly is, you never have enough staff. I mean, we, we ran it one rig twenty-four seven. And you have to have people that are willing to come in the middle of the night or, you know, be there for a whole twenty-four hours or. And there's never enough people. Um, and I know a lot of times she has to, it's for us to take hours because she can't fill the schedule. So I think staffing is huge and I think we need, you know, to try to get more volunteers and that's tough. Because it's not a high-repay position and people don't really want to work when they don't make a lot of money. So just FYI.
Is there a, like you have to be so close if you're on call or do you have to be at the station or what's the?
Within four to six minutes of the station. Within four to six minutes of the station, um, you can, um, respond to scene, but you have to talk to the crew that you're on with and be sure that that's, and it depends. There's a lot of variables to that because, um, yeah, are you a trainee, right? Or are you off training? It depends on if you're advanced D M T. It depends on a whole bunch of stuff. But four to six minutes on the station, um, you're gonna respond.
On a nap?
Application.
I thought you said a nap, I bring a little in, so that doesn't stop.
Well, I would appreciate that each of you who is a volunteer or a staff person, which, well, Josh is, and you are two aid staff.
Yeah, Josh is, Josh is not here right now, but.
Oh, I thought there was another Josh here, or not. Oh, okay, sorry. But if, if the volunteers would stand and just give your name, so I might be able to recognize you, say hi. Do you need you in the community?
Uh, I'm Stephanie. I am an advanced D M T now. I serve Rosie Team. Struggle, I've been down quite some years to get where I am, so my parents. Um, this is my second job. It's like love, what I love to do for a full time, but you know, it's my thing again, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay, daily from, from La Celle. Help EMS the last three years.
Hey.
Sorry, I have to say, I wrote that. Uh, Kay Zerman, uh, has been on two years to count, and I'm an emergency medical responder. Uh, per my own choice. I could go on farther, but I'm satisfied with just being, you know, making help at calls and I can drive. So that, that's enough for me and, well, I was being drivers, so your job's important.
Thank you.
This is Benke. Um, unlike Stephanie, I elected to start this when I was fifty-five, and they said I have two good years left in me. This is three years now, and, um, it's very rewarding. Um, I don't think any of us do it to get rich. There's a lot of, there weren't some ways of it. And she says it's a second family. It certainly is. And I'd just like to add, um, as I don't live in the village, I live in the town of Nuclearis, and I know when the contract is issued in the town, there was discussion. And I hope that you look very closely at those three-year numbers. Um, as a township member, I'm grateful for the fees that Nuclearis EMS charges this community. It's a nominal fee, being a non-essential service. We don't require you to pay for our twenty fifty thousand dollar ambulances and our forty thousand dollar power lifts, your fifty thousand dollar souls. We, I was surprised when I started this job, we learned that in addition to a hundred plus hours of training and a hundred eighty plus hours of training and the ongoing training and the hours served on the service, we also going to be responsible for these emergency too. That was remarkable, but it's also gratifying in that this community, and I'm going to credit Chief with this, has laid the groundwork for a groundswell of community support. We are so well supported by this community, um, by the members, by the businesses, by the festivals. It's amazing to see what this community does. Um, and it's just a different situation. You'll find every EMS in this county is uniquely configured and each is valuable. We backfill for each other. I don't know if you're aware of that, but we mutually, and we go all the way to the mountains. Mount Hora, I mean, out of this district to help other districts when their ambulance is without or out of commission. So having that redundancy, having agencies, sending to these little towns, these little rural EMS agencies are so intrinsic to emergency, when an emergency arises. I hope none of you ever have a loved one that needs rapid, I mean, time counts. You want someone as close as possible. And for what, twenty-one dollars for capita? I think it's pretty amazing that this community has people willing to get as capable of, um, sleep on the couch every once in a while or if the diner, if the couch isn't available, um, it's a special privilege to serve this community in a strong area. And as a county and close friend, don't close the road, the village, um, again, it's a privilege to serve everybody here. So thank you for hearing us out tonight, for asking questions, learning more about us. I have to tell you, when I started, I was dumbfounded by how little I knew about EMS. Um, there's a lot of the papers suited of abnormal job of publicizing what Nuclearis area EMS does, but I, um, think I was oblivious to a lot of that. And being part of the EMS has taught me a lot about what emergency service, um, is and does and how very complex it is. And when you're delivering medical care, how very critical it is that you follow all the rules to the letter. And we're fortunate to have a chief who has not only thirty-five years of EMS background and knows all the incidents and more on her little finger than I'll ever learn in the, whatever the remainder of the time is here, because I'm obviously old. But anyway, the, um, the point is, um, she's, she's got intrinsic knowledge about fire, PD and EMS. And there's enough applications when all three of our services are on call together, and it's amazing how well this community works together, as always. I can't say enough about our, our partners in fire and, and PD. They're true partners. Anyway. Thank you. I'm sorry if I.
My name is Sarah Hubie, and I'm a transplant for the area, so you won't recognize the last name, but I'm an E M T and a driver.
Thanks, guys.
Anyone else have anything?
Welcome. Thank you very much.
Here, just pull the plug.
Yeah, that's fine. Would you mind sending me a personal record?
Pulling the plug.
And if you were here for EMS, you can, we're not going to be offended if you leave.
Okay, moving on. Item B, consideration discussion, twenty twenty-four C M R report. Got there and over came around. There is no page thirty-two.
Um, yeah, I put that in the email when I sent out the agenda packets. I did not, for those of you that have printed packets, I did not print the whole report because it's very long. I do have a full report here if anybody would like to view it, but it is on the agenda packet online.
I would like to name one.
You're like, what?
Scott, are you gonna speak to this?
What do you like? Everything. Just, uh, fifty-eight's version. Um, we, uh, the D N R scores. This is what I'm using a rating scale, uh, which we had, uh, I see it as three point nine five.
Wow.
Nice. So where we got a date down was some certifications. I need two more again. Did a regional cable, that's basically, uh, but they only took off point zero five, obviously. Some of the things I know we need to work on, but just this, some of you know, last year we were short-staffed. So this report disposed for twenty twenty-four. This isn't anything up, you know, from January first, twenty twenty-five. So I see here we're short-staffed with the changing over local employees. Um, so this year, our focus, we're trying to work on is getting more of the sanitary, so we're clean, televised, uh, Scott's already got some taken care of. Uh, we're working with our industrial users right now. They're looking to strand where surveys will be going out toward larger industrial users, brewery, jacklins, um, the nursing home per se, and we'll be on some chemicals, things that are going about their drains. Some of you know that we're on use that are big bottles of mobile edition. That's going really well. Um, so what we're doing with this survey is we're going to try to figure out where our biggest, they're not builders, but our biggest users are. It's, I mean, just normal dish soap that you use, Dawn dish soap, it's phosphorus in it. We just put in a five, five million dollar um, to remove phosphorus, but even a couple of times of Dawn dish soap have phosphorus, everything has phosphorus in it. So if we can find our larger users, which we already know who they are, uh, that's kind of our goal for this year and to see what they're doing, because then maybe we can persuade them to use phosphorus through free detergent salts or cleaners, um, sanitizer, stuff like that. Um, because we use a, a filter, it's like a jack cartling. They help pull some of the phosphorus out with chemical addition. So if we can lessen, you know, chemical use, plus that's massive, alcohol, for the plant, and then it often turns into less sludge production as well, which we pay for every year. Fuckery farmers don't make pay to put on them in yet. Some places, uh, large municipalities have that issue, but lucky enough, a few work with a local farmer that quantity they can give. Yeah, moving on the report, though, everything is up to speed, as I said, working on getting certifications. We just gotta talk about that yesterday. It's a classic of an appearance in Denver, but we may take one, then it's gonna take the other. Well, we were signed up to do one for some of your issues, Jim, and we just kind of pushed it back, you know, that stuff. Um, so we were trying to call issues. They have to hear it's somewhere. So that'll be another some. Taking care of the novel. So next year hopefully with three point five. Awesome. So.
Yeah, I, I did, did not realize we should be using phosphorus, we need a stone. Be good to put a knowledge in, uh, you know.
The D N R has, um, public education, things like that. Um, that's something I can look into this fall. I go to my conferences, uh, operations conference every year. Well, our limits are low too. I mean, you know, we, there's high amounts that come in and very little goes out, you know, I mean. So this new system, we, we get to break our permit. We, we've made a permit level, but we get to go for so our limit is point one two parts million. So the highest we can add is point one two, this amount of phosphorus. To the filter that removes phosphorus is something that you throw away or you wash it out or what? It's big, it's, uh, ten or twelve feet deep. It's, it's a large pit. It's six of them, and they're like, so they're like jacked. And they should last ten to twelve years. So there's each one, there's three of them. You run one at a time, you run one per month, and then you let the other one sit. So it's drainage, cleaning the lawn, and then together. Obviously, they call it when they go bad. That's something, yeah, but it, it's something where those prices will change every, it's about ten to twelve years from now.
The other thing I just wanted to point out from a staff level and, um, specifically with our staff, and I know the board is aware of this, but we are so incredibly lucky to have the staff that we have at the village from department heads all the way down. Um, you know, obviously, Aaron battled something this year that took him out of work for a while. Scott stepped in. We see this with departments. Amy has done this, Jeff has done this. Um, I think this is a really true testament to how great of a staff we have here, and the village is so fortunate to have the people in this building and in our other village buildings that we do. Um, so thank you.
And the C M R report is done annual. We have to produce it every year.
Well, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion to approve the compliance maintenance annual report for Nuclearis wastewater treatment facility.
Okay, gang, we all made a round. Made a motion to accept the report.
Oh.
Thank you seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most caring. Item six, consideration discussions, library project update.
All right, so things are really fast and furious now. Um, we had good package opening yesterday and many different categories hanging with this, which you all will be approving at next Tuesday's meeting, so that's exciting. Um, our library shelving arrived yesterday, some very, we got free shelving. We're doing a big renovation. That was delivered to two different locations in town. Um, we, the fencing, if you've driven by the fencing, it's up and we're just figuring out the timeline to initially break that ground, so various things, so. Um, and then I know John, our neighbor, a new neighbor in the library, had a question regarding the sidewalk, and I just wanted to hear what your question was and see if it occurred.
While the other plans I saw, I noticed the sidewalk was bent.
Oh, yeah, bent, yeah.
Moved over, we're talking to the city because we have some parking there, so they closed all the way away, so I was sharing this on the car. Okay, just curious why that went so far.
Sure.
It went back afterwards.
Okay, so I got a heads up regarding this question today, and I did reach out to Kevin Yaska, who would know the answer to these questions about why the rerouting is different. That sidewalk is entirely in the right way, um, of the village, although I know that it may seem like it's the new front yard. So, um, I will reach out to Kevin again tomorrow, see if we can get any answers to questions and possibly see if I can have him come to the library for a meeting via Zoom or in person to kind of go over this. Would you be available on Monday night, six thirty?
Sure.
Damn, okay, all right. So.
I, I know you noticed that before.
Right, okay.
When I, when I showed up on Facebook.
Yeah. So you're posted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting.
Yeah.
Okay, item seven, public works with safety. Want to do these in a block to.
Yeah, so, uh, yep, uh, so John, you probably should have stayed just because you are a license holder here. Uh, I do want to direct the board. Jeff put together a really nice little spreadsheet. It really, it really spoke to my little spreadsheet. Um, we, this is obviously something we do, we do every year with these alcohol licensing, but Jeff put together this spreadsheet so the board can see like how many calls they had at each of these locations, if there's issues, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so that is on page one sixty-six of your packet. Which, if you have a printed one for me, it's in there, but it's this chart here. Um.
We'll get to see the great spreadsheet.
I sent it to you, Jessica, you. Um, so I think the one thing, Jeff, do you want to comment on maybe the one thing that kind of sticks out this year that we don't typically see on here?
I think the one we wanted to comment was the Sugar River, uh, pizza. Uh, they, uh, one night, uh, we found out they didn't have an operator on, so we were going to close them down for a couple hours until they got one there. They were a little.
It is pretty. But other than that, everything was reviewed by staff, reviewed by Chief Sturdivant, and recommended for approval. And then, yes, John, if you would, if you have seen.
I officially, I'm going to need some more for safety consideration and discussion.
Thank you.
Well, motion to approve alcohol beverage licenses.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks for this spreadsheet, Jeff. I wish you could see it.
I sent it to you. It's right here.
Okay, item B, consideration discussion, missing, I can't talk, you, discussion miscellaneous like.
Yeah, once again, these are your licenses that we see. We have the mobile home park, the pool tables at Topper's in Cleveland, and then the tobacco retail and a handful of different, uh, establishments in town.
Again, officially, I've seen.
Thank you, John.
Motion to approve miscellaneous licenses.
I second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Uh, committee appointments. Okay. So we've got Parks and Rec, there is going to serve on there. Um, Steve Donovan is going to take, um, the position of plan commission. Steve Donovan is gonna take, um, the position of plan commission. Tara Wild. Resigned, so if anybody knows a realtor that lives in the village, if you need a realtor on that committee.
Steve took Chuck Phillips' spot. Chuck resigned last week. Um, so Steve filled Chuck Phillips' spot and now Tara has resigned, uh, so we are looking for a realtor. So I understand.
And on E T Z, Steve Donovan is gonna be there in Chuck's place. Um. Appeals board, what do we need to think?
Yep, uh, so Beth is now the new chair because Chuck Phillips was the chair. He resigned from that as well. Chuck Phillips resigned from all of his committees that he was on. Uh, Beth is the chair and then we have a vacancy. Um, I did contact our first alternate. He is not interested in filling the vacancy. I left a message for our second alternate and have not heard back, so that would be a spot where we are looking to fill. Um, but I'm happy to report that is the only vacancy that we have with new appointments, which has not been the case previously, so we've done a great job of filling. Uh, the appeals board, we don't see it super often, but it's obviously a very important committee to have full, so.
And just anybody can be on that?
Um, somebody that is interested in that, that area and lives in the village, yep. Uh, you talked to Beth Luxinger, she is the chair.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept those.
Yep.
Appointments.
I motion to approve the appointments.
Second.
Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Okay, we need a motion to go into closed session.
I motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Yeah.
Alcohol, Sarah Claus. Baca, yep, Jessie.
Yeah.
John, Larry.
Yeah.
Peggy.
Yeah.
Roger.
Yep. I'm gonna close the door so I can sit on the hallway.
Jessie, can you flip that sign up?